Hey guys, how we doing? I'm Joe Gaither. I'm the host of the Joe Gaither Show on Bama Central. And usually you guys watch me to talk about sports, but I'm not here to talk about any sports today. I'm here because I live in Northport and it is a very, very interesting time in Northport as we're getting ready for municipal elections. On August 26th, you're going to be able to go to the polls and cast your votes for city council and for mayor. And I'm here to hopefully try to get you ready for that. We are in the middle of getting to know all our city council men and women and future, you know, challenging city council men and women. And today I'm very blessed to have Turnley Smith. Turnley Smith is running for District One City Councilman. He's challenging Christie Bobo and he's blessed to give me some, or he's blessing me with some of his time today. And I'm really looking forward to getting to know you, Turnley, and trying to get us ready for this election coming up. Thank you for your time.
Yes, I appreciate you having me on.
Absolutely. So Turnley, I'll just get right into it by asking you, what you do in your day job or your real job? And really, um, what's your background in Northport?
Okay, so uh, day job, I work for the city of Tuscaloosa. I'm the Deputy Director of Building and Inspections. I came by that job about four months ago, right before I decided to run for city council. I've lived in Northport since 2006. And we have, we've been here, raised two kids. I've got one that's graduated off to college and another one that's going into 11th grade. And so we're, uh, that's kind of what hit me is being ready to, to run for city council was, uh, I had a little more time on my hands. And so I wanted to pursue city council. And so timing was, was right for me on that.
The timing's right for you? What do you think was, are some of your motivations? Or what stirred you up and thought, oh, I'm right for this role?
Well, I, you know, uh, living in Northport for so long, you kind of, you kind of watch it roll around and, and, everything's kind of going the way it should. And uh, it's just, you know, nice little small town charming. That's why we chose it. And um, but, but just recently in the last few years, it's gotten a little, uh, just, just a little uneasy. And a lot of, a lot of grumblings going around with the citizens. And um, I, you know, I didn't really pay much attention to it in terms of what can I do? It was just kind of like, oh, there's something different going on. And uh, so I, you know, I finally, finally said, hey, I'm gonna do something about it. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk about the change and I'm just gonna be, be the change. So I wanted to have a platform where my agenda is the agenda of the citizens. And how can I be a voice for all the citizens? And, and how can I represent District One, uh, the best of my abilities? And, and be able to be that voice at city hall?
Awesome, awesome. Well, how do you think, um, your regular job helps you? Maybe will, will help you, uh, in terms of, of your perspective's district city council position?
Yeah, so uh, educationally, I'm, I'm prepared for this, this position. Went through a degree in architecture, interior architecture. Got bachelor's degree in environmental design. I, I worked for an architecture firm in Tuscaloosa for three years. And then did my own design build firm, uh, in, in Northport for 15 plus years. So I, I'm, I'm qualified in the fact that I know what a city, a successful city needs to look like. And, and the decisions it needs to make and the amenities it needs to have. I just, I'm, that's what I do. And, and so Northport has a lot of great amenities, but it could have so many more. And my education, my experience, my background, uh, will help make those decisions, make those informed decisions, uh, and just focus on smart growth, utilizing our, our, our funds in a way that it's good for everybody. It's a good deal for Northport. So that, that's what I'm bringing to the table in terms of, uh, taking that seat on, on city council.
What are some of the amenities that you like in Northport?
Well, I think our, our downtown area is great, right? That's probably one of the most photographed areas in the state of Alabama. The downtown area is great. We have the Riverwalk. I feel like, you know, it's, people don't realize how great it could be. You know, you look at cities like Chattanooga or uh, even Tuscaloosa, right? That turned their back on the river for so long. And then they started putting money into it and, and started developing it and embracing the river. And now they have just a great Riverwalk. And I think that's one of the things that, that we could have as well. I think our, uh, you know, Main Avenue, the historic homes, uh, great, uh, great amenities. I think, uh, River Run Park that's fixing to open up. I think that's going to be fantastic. We, we grew up in travel ball, so uh, we're, I'm, I'm excited to see, you know, what that, what that brings to the city. And I think, you know, Vanegraff Park is a great, we take the dogs out there. They're just, they're, God, I'm sitting here trying to think of all the great things that we have. And you know, even events that we have like Dickens Downtown and uh, rest in peace, Kentuck, right, right? That was, that was kind of the first straw for me was, was when we lost Kentuck. God, I was really upset about that. We enjoyed going there every year and, and seeing everything. But you know, just events like that, that where we kind of shut down the streets and you know, just have those events. I think, I think those are, those are great things that we can do, uh, because we are such a smaller scale. But I mean, those are, those are just some things I'm thinking about.
Yeah. What kind of dogs do you have?
Uh, I've got a, I've got a, uh, both of them are rescues. They're, uh, black labs of some sort. One was a walk-up from the neighborhood and, and one was a, a rescue from our, our vet. But uh, one is three years old and one is, uh, 12 years old, 13 years old, so.
That walk-up picked the right house.
He did, he did. Yeah, it was, it was, he, he picked his lottery ticket for sure.
There you go, that's great. Uh, well, one of the big things that's going on where the, the, that really has drawn me to try to tackle to get into this project is all the mixed emotions surrounding University Beach. And really, oh, it's going to be great, or oh, it's going to be horrible on both ends. Uh, I'll just ask you, where do you stand on University Beach? And uh, the, the way that it has been handled so far, uh, in Northport?
Yeah, so we didn't know a lot about it at first. You know, the, the talk was doing a water park out on Rose Boulevard. We were excited about that. And, and then it kind of, it kind of disappeared for a little bit. And then it reared its head as, as what it is now. And um, I, it, it surprised me that that big of a project went so silent for so long. But then you start seeing how it all transpired and, and everything's starting to make sense now. But um, the, the project as a whole, I don't think is, is right for Northport. It doesn't, it doesn't scream Northport to me. I think the development as it is, is a, is a great design, but it's just not right for, for us, for Northport, and especially in that location. I just, I don't know, there, there just seemed to be a lot of desperate decisions made on the location and the development itself. And, and the amenities that it, that it may, that it offers. I just, I don't know, I, it just seemed like there were, there was a lot of desperation in those decisions, uh, being made. And I, I, you know, architecturally speaking, I'd, I'm, if, if I had been involved, and again, that's what I want to bring to the table, is, is being able to make informed decisions and say, okay, I've seen a development like this before. Um, I've, I've been to a city that's had this kind of thing before. Let's think about these kinds of things, right? Let's think about the, the pros and the cons and not just act like it's going to be 100% great for 100% of the people. What are the pros and cons? And, and I felt like if they had done that and kind of weighed the, the pros and cons, then they would have seen, well, maybe this isn't the best thing for Northport right now. But I think if I had been involved, it, it would have looked a lot differently. It might've been in a different location. But you know, anytime you've got somebody wanting to spend $350 million in your town, you don't make those decisions in isolation. You don't, don't make them behind closed doors. You, you get the city involved, you get your citizens involved because uh, that, that $350 million is going to benefit them. And, and you want to make the, you want to make a $350 decision. You don't, you don't want to, don't want to do it in isolation, so.
We're talking to Turnley Smith. He's a candidate for District One City, City Council. And you guys can vote, uh, on August 26th. So let's say, uh, that the vote goes, goes your way. What would be maybe your hope or desire to see the University Beach to fruition? Or change it? Or what, 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 what do you think, uh, you would, you would hope to see happen with that?
Well, right now it's really hard to say what's going to happen with it. The developer does not have a, a great history with major developments. The worst thing in the world is it could go belly up and it just be a, a, a mud hole for however long. That's the worst thing that could happen. And we definitely don't want that. So I think it's important for us to really kind of step back, take a look at it and, and make sure that it's the best thing that's happening for Northport, right? I mean, there's a, there's a lot of money on the table and we just need to make sure that, that, that Northport is spending its money the way it should and that it's receiving the money that it should. And um, we just, we can't, we can't move forward on something so large on, you know, a handshake and a, an idle promise. I, it just, it's just too big of a development. So we, we've really got to pick it apart and, and see what, um, what are the components that make it up? And, and, and where can we go from there? But again, keeping Northport in, in, in the, the forefront of the decisions. And just doing what's best, uh, by that development and for the people.
You're talking about keeping the Northport at the forefront. And, and really, uh, you said that the, the project's not quite right for Northport. Can you describe what Northport is to you? What, what is the heart of Northport? What is, what is, how would you define Northport and, and its qualities and characteristics?
Yeah, so I, it's a nice southern charming town. I've heard a few citizens refer to it as, as Mayberry. I don't think it's quite that small, but um, I, I just think it's charm. And that comes from the citizens, right? I've met so many people who, you know, grew up, uh, around downtown Northport and, and, and just, you know, their grandparents lived there. And there's just so much history with the citizens in Northport. And I think that's probably the heart of Northport, is its citizens. Kind of like us, once you move here, you kind of stay here. And, and you do it out of love, just uh, from that charm. And obviously Northport is growing. It has grown a lot in the last 15 years. But I think it still has maintained that charm. I think it's, uh, we're, we're getting a little, we're, we're suffering from a little bit of sprawl, but um, but nothing too bad. And, and again, we can make informed decisions to kind of control that. But uh, um, I, I think, I think the, the, the tight-knit community that it is, 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 is the heart of Northport. You know, if, like, these events that we have, you're going to see somebody you know. You're going to see somebody you grew up with. You're gonna, you're gonna see somebody who your mama knows, right? I mean, that, you're just, that's just going to happen. And I think that's what's nice about, uh, about Northport. You've got a lot of transplants in Northport, a lot of people have moved there. So um, you know, myself being one of them, but uh, but it just, it feels like home.
You mentioned right at the top that you're employed by the city of Tuscaloosa. What would you say to someone who might ask if, uh, your, might have a conflict of interest between your, your day job, city of Tuscaloosa and working for, as a city councilman for Northport?
Yeah, and uh, we, we talked to, uh, legal at city of Tuscaloosa before I jumped in and committed to the, to the council, uh, campaign. And uh, you know, reached out to my personal attorney. And um, you know, we, we talked through it. What does it look like? And if there were any issues, uh, during a council meeting or any decisions like that, obviously I would recuse myself and, and we'd move forward. But I, I don't see it being any issues. If anything, I see it being a benefit. I, for Northport, I don't think it's important for us to be like Tuscaloosa. It's just not necessary. We're a totally different city. But I do think we can, uh, take some of our cues, uh, from Tuscaloosa into seeing what's beneficial for them. How have they been successful? What are some things we could do, uh, to be successful in the same way? What are some decisions we can make to avoid, uh, mistakes that they've made? You know, they, they've, they've seen a lot of growth as well. And um, and I think that they are, they, just like many other cities, are a model that we can use. And you know, their city council is open for us to talk to and have dialogue. Because you'll hear it on that side of the river, just like you hear it on this side. When we're, when one is successful, both can be successful. And, and, and so I think that's important, that we need to have our own identity. But at the same time, uh, we can, we can feed off of each other. Uh, and I think we can be just as beneficial to Tuscaloosa as Tuscaloosa can be to Northport. Um, and, and we've got that, we've got that ability. Because you get people over in Tuscaloosa that may not want to deal with the, the traffic or the crowds, and they want to get away from that a little bit. That's, that's why we're here. We, we will gladly, uh, uh, take your business and, 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 uh, be there and, and just show you some southern hospitality.
What do you think the perception, the outside perception of Northport is?
Um, I, you know, if, if I ever tell somebody that I'm from Northport, they're, they're like, where? And I say Tuscaloosa, just, just across the river from Tuscaloosa. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's as popular, obviously, as, as Tuscaloosa is. And um, you know, some might think, and I, and I, I get from some citizens that, they feel like maybe they're the, the little brother of Tuscaloosa. But I just, I don't feel that way. I, I feel like, um, I feel like Northport is, is a gem. And, and, and we need to focus on the strengths and the positives that are Northport. But I, I think just a lot of people don't know much about Northport. There's, there's not a lot that really puts us on the map. You know, other than the Arts Festival or, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't see us being that, that kind of spotlight city. But I think that if you happen to travel to Tuscaloosa and you stumble upon Northport, you'll remember Northport.
What have you heard from constituents or from business owners about, uh, businesses in, in Northport? And attracting new business to, to Northport? Maybe what might be your vision or your hope to, of attracting new business? What do you think about really raising the economic profile of the city?
Yeah, so I, you know, that's the thing about getting businesses in here. And I understand that, you know, we have a lot to offer, um, to get businesses in here. But I, I don't think that we need to just give away the farm, uh, to get businesses in here. We, we have, we have a lot of benefit for, for businesses coming in. And, and one of the things we have is Tuscaloosa, right across the river, that has 200,000 people, eight times out of the year, that, that, again, those people are not going to stay over there. They're going to come over to Northport. So we just, we're a lot more important than we realize. We're a lot more capable than we realize. And we have a lot more potential than we realize. And I feel like when we make those desperate decisions where it's like, you know, new businesses, please come in, we'll do anything you ask. I just don't think that that, that's where we need to be. Because I think, I mean, it upsets our current businesses, right? Where, why aren't our current businesses getting those kinds of deals? Why, you know, to me, those are the backbone of, of our, 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 our city. And, and, and we're, we're kind of turning our back on that. And I, I don't think that that's a, that's a good deal. Now, I do, I do like incentives. I do like, you know, being able to get new businesses in here. So like keeping our, our, our current businesses and our old businesses and businesses that have been here for 50 years. I like keeping them happy too. So I think it's, it's a good balance. But I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's so important to get a new business in here that you make an old business mad. It just doesn't make sense to me, uh, to do that. And again, we, we are important enough and we've got enough traffic and enough, uh, people coming through here that we can, we can bring in new businesses. Uh, and we can kind of, I feel like we can make up our own rules.
If, if Turnley Smith had a wish list of either specifics or general types of businesses, what would you like to see move, move, move to, move to Northport? Excuse me?
Um, you know, there's, I, I think probably, um, probably, and again, if it's Turnley talking, I, I'm sitting here thinking about, you know, I wish we had, you know, some bike rental places, right? I, I wish we had a little more outdoor type stuff. And um, you know, a few more different restaurants. And um, so those are kind of, you know, just my, my ideas. But you know, you, you start going on social media and you, you see, I wish we had, uh, Costco or, or something like that. And I, you know, maybe we could handle another Chick-fil-A. I mean, I've never seen such success before. But um, you know, that's, that's the thing I, I really getting excited about is, you know, what kind of businesses? And again, it's up to the citizens. It's, it's not about what Turnley wants. It's about what, what, uh, what the citizens want. What, what do you feel like would do well? Cause there are businesses that were chosen by past city council members that you look at now and they're just kind of shells of buildings and, and didn't do too well. I think it was because there wasn't a lot of civic input to, to those decisions. So that's what's exciting to me is to be able to reach out to, to the citizens and say, okay, what, what do we want? What do we need to go after? You know, what's, what's hot right now? What do we need to, uh, what do we need to look at? So I, I'm excited about that part.
What do you think's the best way to engage civic input? And, and, and how would you like to see that happen in relationship with a future city council?
Yeah, so, so one of the ideas that I had is, uh, what's interesting about District One is you've got what's south of 82 and then what's north of 82. So, so for, for me, uh, for my district, it's, it's, it is a, a vast demographic in terms of, you know, the businesses that are here, the citizens that are here. So it's been interesting getting to know the different areas. One of the ideas that I had is, is once I'm in, in, on city council is having regular meetings with representatives of each neighborhood, each community. I was joking the other day, you know, every neighborhood has its own mayor. And, and, and you know who you are if you're, if you're the mayor. And I would just like to meet with those people on a regular basis and, and get some feedback and, and talk about their neighborhood specifically. And, and have a, have a group that, that gets together. Because again, somebody's concerns north of 82 may not be the concerns south of 82. And, and I think it's good to have those kind of, uh, just brainstorming sessions and, and just talking about what, what we need to do. And you know, obviously if you, you get a group of 30, 40, 50 people and, and all anybody can talk about is, well, we need to pave the roads and we need to mow the grass, right? To me, those are things that, that are, that are supposed to be done automatically, right? That, that's just stuff that happens, right? We shouldn't be concerned with those kinds of things. And so if we're concerning ourselves with those and we're focused on that stuff, we can't focus on the future and how to, how to grow the city, uh, the city, in a, in a smart and, and responsible manner. So um, that, that's one of the things I've, I've been looking at is meeting with representatives of the neighborhoods. It's not people I'm going to appoint or anything like that. Again, it's, it's kind of a self-appointed. If it's, there's an HOA president, uh, you know, it'd be somebody like that or somebody on the HOA. So I, I'm excited about that, that idea coming to fruition. But again, just having regular meetings to talk about Northport and talk about their neighborhoods.
As you've gotten into, uh, the, the election, the election process or, or running for the election, who are some of the, the relationships that you've made as far as, uh, bigger donors? People want to know, oh, who's, who's in charge, who's behind you?
Right.
I don't care about Jimmy Smith giving you five bucks, but with some of your larger constituents.
That, that's what's funny is, is I have, I don't really have any, uh, deep pockets behind me. I, it, it really is, uh, just, I, it's, it's, it's this, it's the citizens. It's their, their, their backing me, uh, financially. And it is, it might be $50 here or there. And, but that adds up and, uh, which is nice. And, and I, I didn't really go after any deep pockets. I wanted this to be more of a, kind of a grassroots campaign and, and just, just be down, um, as a citizen who is running for, for council and not to be a politician, um, coming with deep pockets support. And I, I just, I didn't want to be there. So it, it really, I, I don't have any, any, any big donors or anything like that. It's just been, you know, kind of, um, uh, just whatever as I'm talking. And I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of tough on myself when it comes to asking for money. So it's, uh, I, I, you know, if somebody wants to donate, great. I, I love it. Otherwise, I, I just appreciate the support, appreciate, uh, the, a vote on August 26th and appreciate people putting yard signs up, so.
You mentioned your two children are moving out of the house. What's your wife think about you running?
Well, at, at first she was mortified. She did not, not want me to do it and, and didn't want me to be in the public, uh, spotlight. But we talked through it, prayed through it. And um, I wasn't going to do it unless she was 100% all in. And, and it took, it took some, some evenings of talking through it, but, but we got there. And um, she's loving it, right? She, her biggest argument is if you want someone who's going to do the job the right way, put my husband in there. And, and so obviously she believes in me. And I wish everybody I, that I come across could believe in me like she does. But uh, um, yeah, she's excited about it. And you probably won't see her a lot in the public spotlight, but she's, she's there in the shadows and backing me up.
We're talking to Turnley Smith. He is running for city council District One. You can vote in the elections on August 26th. A, a little bit of a sticky subject is with the education. You have 10 schools in Northport, but they don't govern themselves. They're tied in with Tuscaloosa City and County, uh, school systems. What are your thoughts on the 10 schools in Northport? And what are your thoughts when you hear people say, we need to do something for our schools?
Well, I, I totally agree. We, we need to do something with our schools. We need to do something on a regular basis for our schools. I think we've got, uh, some really, uh, really great schools within, uh, Northport. And, and I think it's important to recognize, and, and we've had discussions on this, but if, if we wanted to go to our own school system, a city school system, it would take a lot of money to get there. Um, and then once you get there, it takes a lot of money to, uh, sustain, but then also a lot of money to, to move forward. And I just, we're not there yet. Right now, we need to be focused on what we have and, and making what we have better. And we've got the money to do that. And, and we need to be doing that. And we need to, uh, make sure that, that our, our students are taken care of, our teachers are taken care of, our faculty and staff are taken care of. And, and we, we can do that. We can, we can make the decisions to spend that money wisely in the schools as they are right now.
You talked about citizen outreach and responsible growth, growth that matches the heart and footprint of Northport. What would be some of your other major, uh, major goals or aspirations should you win the District One seat?
Um, I, I think, I think, you know, when we say tourism, we, we can't really focus on one, one thing about it. But again, the charm to me is our, our biggest tourist attraction. We, we obviously have a lot of outdoor activities that, that, that could bring people in. But I think, I think the main thing is we're going to grow. Northport is going to grow. It, it's going to have people moving in. And so we need to establish those neighborhoods and, and plan those the way they should be planned. And so we need to establish those neighborhoods and, and plan those the way they should be planned. And, and again, not get into sprawl or, or anything like that, but, really focus on how we're developing our neighborhoods. That's, that's about the infrastructure, right? We need to be planning, not for five years down the road, but for 50 years down the road. Uh, we need to focus on, again, maintaining the roads we have. That doesn't need to be, we don't need to be sacrificing our roads to, to build new roads, right? Um, we need to be taking care of, uh, the, the, the past and the present so that we can build for the future. Um, and I think, you know, again, with River Run Park where it is, I, I'm interested to see what kind of growth comes from that. We're going to have, uh, a lot of people coming in from out of town. And, and that's another component of Northport is, is the out of town guests, if they're here for the weekend. How, how can we focus on giving them the best experience? Be, because we don't want them to get to Northport, look around, not have anything to do, not have anywhere to eat, not have any place to stay, and then spend their money in Tuscaloosa. That, that doesn't make sense, especially if we're drawing them in. So we've really got to focus on looking at, okay, if we're from out of town, how do we, how do we make it the best experience for them? And, and that's important. That, that's, that's really important. Because again, it's, it's not a, it's not a tourist attraction like the Grand Canyon, but we, we get a lot of traffic and we need to, we need to, prioritize what that looks like. Um, and I, and I think that's, that's one of the things that we've been missing. Um, again, I'm excited to see what we can do, the decisions we can make and, and get people, you know, come into Northport, spending their money in Northport, loving Northport, uh, and then going home and telling their friends about it.
You're running for the District One seat against Christie Bobo. Can you say something nice about Christie?
She has blonde hair.
Perfect.
Um, no, I, you know, Christie, I, I don't know Christie personally. Um, I don't, um, I, I've never, never met her face to face. Um, I know she comes from, I know she comes from a great family. Um, I, I did not know her father. Uh, I have met her uncle. And, uh, and I, I got some history on the Bobo family and, and what they've contributed to Northport. Agriculturally and, uh, historically. And so I've enjoyed getting to know, uh, about the Bobo family. But I've not, I've not met Christie. Uh, I suppose August 12th, I will meet her.
Forum, right?
The big forum, I will meet her then, I suppose. Um, but yeah, I'm, that's, that's all I got.
Perfect. Uh, I think we've hit University Beach. We've hit kind of your visions and goals, why you wanted to get into city council, education as well, bringing in new business. I'll ask you if we've left anything on the table for your agenda, uh, i- if, if there's anything you, that you think, oh man, he should have asked me about that.
Um, you know, I, again, I, I'm kind of priding myself in this campaign as the voice of the citizens, a representative of the citizens. Um, I want to be there as their, uh, their representative at city hall. And again, it, it's, it's public service for me. It's not political for me. I just, I don't have an agenda other than the agenda of the citizens. And, uh, I'm looking forward to that. Um, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to meeting the rest of the great citizens of, of Northport and, I, you know, again, it's just, some people think people that run for these, these types of offices are just, you know, crazy to, to do it. But I, I just, I don't know. I just, I have a passion for Northport in a sense that I, I just, I think it needs good representation and, you know, looking at the candidates that are running, you know, I, I, I see, I see probably one of the best councils, that Northport has seen, uh, in a really long time. If, if, if the right people get elected, there's a, there's a real good chance that, that we can make a really big difference in Northport. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm pretty excited about that.
Well, Turner, I appreciate all your time today. I'll leave you the last word. You can talk to, uh, whoever and let them know, uh, ma- basically a bottom line to leave us with. I appreciate your time today.
I know. I think it's important that everybody get out and vote. Uh, Northport saw less than 20% voters turnout at the last election. And I think this one, that you've heard people say it's, it's one of the most important elections, uh, in the history of Northport. And, and, and that's important. So I think, I think we've got to, we've got to recognize where we are in history right now. And so it, it, it's important to get out and vote. It's important to represent, uh, Northport. And I, you know, I'd love to see an, an, a massive amount of people turn out for the vote. Um, so I, and I think we can, I think we can do that. We, we've got, we're, we're set up for it. Um, you know, District One is at city council, or I'm sorry, city hall. Um, so for District One, we've got it easy. Uh, we, we, so there's no excuses to not get out there. Um, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the polls will be open. August 26th, I, I'd, I'd, I'd really like to have, uh, a, a challenge amongst the districts and say that District One will have the, the best voter turnout. Uh, and I'd like to challenge all the districts to, to show up and show out for sure.
He's Turner Smith. He's going to be on your ballot challenging for the District One City Council seat on August 26th. I appreciate everybody who's given us some of their time today. As you get ready for the elections, we'll keep getting ready for the elections as it is coming up soon right here in Northport.